This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia, Town of Stratford Chairman of the Town Council. It is March 8th, 2021. It is approximately, it is 6:46 PM and we're going to begin this evening's public forum. Ms. Paquette, I believe you said there is currently no one signed up. Is that accurate?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, and is there anybody else on the line that would wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the public forum closed at 6:46. Thank you all and we'll reconvene at 8:00 PM sharp on this line for the town council meeting. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia. Today is March 8th, 2021. It is 8:01 PM and we're going to call the regularly scheduled town council meeting for the Town of Stratford in order. We will start with the invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilor Taveras. Councilor Taveras, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By your heads. Father, we thank you for this awesome opportunity and privilege to serve all the citizens of Stratford. We ask you that you bless our leadership, bless my fellow councilpersons and all those working in town hall to serve all of your people. May it be pleasing in your eyes that we serve without rink or acrimony. And Lord, we also thank you for this opportunity that we recognize it being International Women's Day within Women's History Month. We thank you for the opportunity that we finally recognize women and that women every day is Women's Day. And we thank you for that opportunity that when women do better, families do better. When families do better, society does better. And Father, we also ask you to have compassion and mercy for all of those that have lost this fight during this pandemic. Please, Lord, give them solace and please, Lord, help ease their pain. And Lord, we also like to thank you that we have the wisdom of a life-saving vaccine and that when this pandemic subsides, that we all come together and be better for it. We thank you through your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
States of America.
States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
In the just.
Invisible.
Liberal.
And justice.
For all.
Thank you, Mr. Taveras.
Thank you.
Excellent. Moving along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the minutes of the regular, the regular meeting on February 8th and the special meeting on February 17th.
So moved. Bill O'Brien?
Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second. Dave Harden.
I see Councilor Perillo. I heard him first. Any discussion? I see none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero unless Counselor Cannon has called in. Not that I'm aware of. Okay, so motion passes nine zero. Excellent.
Greg's time. Greg's time. Apologies. Greg Cannon's here.
Gotcha. Hang on one second. Thank you, Greg. Marvin, Mr. Wright. Greg is caller 25. Please. Okay, awesome. We'll continue on. Next item on the agenda under ceremonial presentations and awards. In recognition of Women's History Month and actually in today being International Women's Day, we're here to celebrate all the achievements of women across the world and everything that they, that they do. So we felt it would be most appropriate and in an excellent way to ask both of our councilwomen, Dancho and Councilwoman Sheik, to identify someone who was given, a woman who's given back to the Town of Stratford. And I'm not going to steal any of their thunder. I'm going to ask them to, to take a few minutes and, and bring us up to speed on who they have identified and why they are important in, in the town. And I'll go, I'll just go and order the seat. So Caitlin, I'd like to turn over the floor to you if you want and take a few minutes and let us know who you chose.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. So thank you to the Chair and to Mayor Hoydic for having us recognize International Women's Day today, March 8th. David Wright had sent a list of Stratford women who have contributed or made an impact in the world, country, or state and our town. And I decided to choose Susan Elizabeth Freeman. So I'm actually going to read a short excerpt from a wonderful book titled African American Connecticut Explored. And I'll begin. Susan Elizabeth Freeman was a World War II officer and nurse. As a young child, Susan Elizabeth Freeman often provided medical care and aid for family members, her family dog, and dolls. Freeman's mother referred to her daughter as her quote, "little nurse." When the former little nurse became a teenager, she dealt with a tragedy in November of 1918. Early on a Tuesday morning, she joined her father and siblings at the bedside of her dying mother. With his wife Susan Louise Freeman, in the last moments of her life, William Joseph Freeman, young Susan's father, requested that the family members fall to their knees to offer prayer. As he prayed, his wife quietly passed away. In 1921, Susan, a talented student and athlete at Stratford High School, received her diploma. She had been ill for much of the year, suffering through a horrible case of diphtheria. In 1923, her desire to work in healthcare propelled her into nursing school at Friedman's Hospital Training School for Nurses in Washington DC. Freeman also engaged in graduate studies at Howard and Catholic Universities and advanced studies at Columbia University. With her education under her belt, she joined a distinguished lineage of African American nurses in Connecticut, proving to be a caring and understanding nurse. Martha Franklin, a registered nurse, organized the National Association of Colored Graduate Nurses in 1908. Franklin had worked professionally in both Bridgeport and New Haven. As the nation geared up for World War II, the National Association of Colored Graduate Nurses recommended that its members join the efforts of the American Red Cross to provide a pool of nurses. The Red Cross served as a clearinghouse for the Army Nurses Corps. Initially, the Army rejected African American applicants. When they finally accepted black women, Surgeon General James McGee informed the nurses that they could serve only in segregated hospitals and healthcare units. The Army Nurses Corps required that its officers be registered nurses and members of the Red Cross. Mary McLloyd Bethune, who founded Bethune-Cookman College, Mabel Stoppers, President of the Negro Graduate Nurses Association, and Eleanor Roosevelt helped to organize a campaign to recruit African American women into the Corps. Stratford Susan Freeman became part of this early wave of African American female recruits. The military assigned her to Camp Livingston in Louisiana. Even for officers, life for African Americans in the military often meant enduring the humiliation of segregation in travel and camp facilities. Army regulations required officers to travel long distances via the Pullman Berths. It was during such travel that Susan Freeman encountered her first experience with the Jim Crow South. A train conductor in St. Louis told Freeman that the Pullman was off limits to quote negroes who traveled through the South. Instead, she had to ride Lower 13, an area designated for African Americans. Estelle Massey Osborne, a friend of Freeman, who as a native of Texas, had experienced and understood the rules of life abroad segregated trains, overheard Freeman speaking with the conductor about the confusion. Osborne, who rode Lower 13, did not grasp that Freeman, a native of Connecticut, had not experienced such indignities in public travel. Osborne was the first African American woman to receive a master's degree in nursing. She went on to lead the National Association of Graduate Nurses, the premier organization at the time for African American nurses. The conductor led Freeman to a private room where she completed the Jim Crow trip to Louisiana with accommodations most usually not afforded to most African American travelers. Although the camp initially placed all white and black nurses in the same area, camp officials quickly organized efforts to construct segregated housing. In addition, African American doctors and nurses provided care only for African American soldiers. The Army sent Freeman to Fort Houaucha in Arizona in 1942 to become chief nurse. The military gave her unlimited time, just 10 days to prepare, and she and other nurses received notice that day. They had to travel in the day coach. Freeman objected strenuously, which forced a meeting with the, I can't say this word, with the Colonel, when she informed the Colonel about the wretched encounters and conditions that African Americans endured on trains in the South. The nurses were accommodated in Pullman Berths and placed under the protection of two federal officials. When the train made a stop in El Paso, Texas, the conductor told the nurses that they could purchase food at the back of the station stop. Refusing to submit to Jim Crow service, they chose not to eat at all. After the trip resumed, a white woman inquired if the seat beside Freeman was open. The Stratford's native response, that she didn't know whether the seat was taken or not, did not please the enquirer, who asked the question again. Finally, she asked if Freeman was the portret. Freeman fired back quickly, reminding the woman that the nation was at war and pointing out that she should have been able to recognize the military uniform of a nurse. Once at Fort Houaucha, Freeman and 11 other nurses found themselves working in a hospital unit lacking any organizational structure. They set about creating wards for 700 patients, increasing the number of patients they could house to 1,000. Freeman's staff increased to 110 nurses, with the nation fully engrossed in war. The country's military needs called for her to serve overseas in 1943. Aboard the USS James Parker, Freeman and a unit of African American nurses sailed to Africa. Wind, rain, and rough seas battered the ship and people for more than four days. The horrible weather forced most service personnel to avoid dinner, but not Lieutenant Freeman. In the midst of the storm, the ship's surgeon needed her help with an emergency appendectomy. With aid of another nurse, the team successfully completed the surgery. Her voyage also included a harrowing alarm call to abandon ship into the cold waters of the Atlantic Ocean. However, the final order never came for the terrified passengers to disembark. The ship docked in North Africa and Freeman's unit made its way to Liberia for service. Because their housing lacked window screens, the nurses had to sleep under mosquito nets. Even so, mosquitoes carrying malaria infected 19 of the 30 nurses. Freeman's nurses went out into the countryside to care for military personnel in distress. She even encountered a man from Bridgeport, a former member of Marcus Garvey's UNIA, living in Liberia, who knew her family. On November 8th, 1943, the office of the commanding general honored Freeman and eight of her nurses for their dedicated efforts. From 1943 to 1945, Freeman's work received other honors. Her return to Camp Livingston saw her promotion to the rank of captain and full integration of the camp. In 1945, she also received the Mary Mahoney Award from the National Association of Colored Graduate Nurses for her Red Cross work in aiding people who suffered through the ravages of the 1937 Ohio Mississippi flood. On July 31st, 1945, she quietly received her honorable discharge and went home to Stratford. After the war, she put much of her energy into church and civic activities. She helped establish a nursing sorority, Chi AFI. Freeman continued to work until her retirement. In 1979, the pioneering veteran passed away at the Veterans Administration Hospital in West Haven. Susan Freeman's legacy and importance to African American women and military personnel has always been clear. She honorably served her country, community, and state. Her passion for saving lives extended from her earliest days in Stratford to the war zones of North Africa. While fellow Connecticut residents such as Lamuel Custis and Connie Nappier shattered negative stereotypes about African American military pirates, pilots, excuse me, Stratford Susan Freeman and other nurses shattered negative beliefs about the intelligence of African American servicewomen and their capabilities. So I chose her, you're welcome, I chose her because she was the African American woman listed on the list of women to share and also it's Women's History Month. And also, she is a nurse. And in my mind, I would think that she would most likely, if she were alive today, she would be participating to help save as many lives as possible during the pandemic that we're in. And she would most likely be giving her time to our health department and any other public health initiatives that we have here. So I'm happy and honored to share her story with all of you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Councilwoman Dancho, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Caitlin, for that wonderful biography. And I want to also thank Mayor Hoydic for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and Counselor Pia as counselor chair. And I would also like to thank Dave Wright for his resources that he offered to both of us. So today, as we continue the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, Women's History Month, and specifically today as International Women's Day, I'm honored to introduce to you Stratford resident Billy Edgelson Howell. Billy Edgelson was born in Charleston, South Carolina in 1897. After her marriage in 1915 to Richard Howell, who was the editor and publisher of the Bridgeport Herald, the couple moved to Stratford and lived at the corner of South Avenue and Elm Street. Having had no children of their own, Billy became very interested in protecting, grooming, and improving the lives of children in Stratford. With the First World War ongoing and President Wilson's urge for citizens to take up planting, she recognized this as an opportunity where the children of Stratford could contribute and also provide a positive outlet for their energies. She created the Boys and Girls Useful Club in 1917 with the purpose to occupy children by having them plant and care for what was termed war gardens. Children were given awards for the best cared-for garden row of usually cabbage or turnips, and all of the prude up produce was then sold with the proceeds being donated to the American Red Cross in support of the war effort. The club expanded into several branches that resulted in successful gardening contests that were always followed by celebrations and parties for the children, usually at her home on Elm Street. The children loved these and looked forward to, and they looked forward to them over the years. Many time, many times, Useful Club children were treated to theater parties or field trips like Days at the Local Beaches, always followed by ice cream treats. Billy Howell was also a big sister to Girl Scout Troop Number One of Stratford, which was considered one of the best-trained and most successful troops in the state. She directed a play where the proceeds went to charitable activities in which the troop was interested. In her love of plays and movies, she was also well known for hosting many movie and vaudeville stars from New York City. These visits always caused excitement in town and were prominently reported on in the local newspapers. On December 27th in 1917, Stratford held its first Christmas tree celebration thanks to Mrs. Rob, Richard Howell. Over 5,000 people attended the celebration of the first community tree at Academy Hill, presided by First Selectman James Lally. Each child was given a stocking filled with nuts, candy, and oranges. Mrs. Howell and her committee worked for weeks to sew together 2,500 stockings and fill them with treats in time for the celebration. In addition to theater and community work, Billy found time to also volunteer at the local isolation hospital where help was greatly needed. Billy was elected and served as a congressional worker and a, and political town leader for the Stratford Equal Franchise League. She represented, she represented Stratford at the Fairfield County Suffrage Association. And on May Day in 1920, she participated in the suffragists' visit to Washington DC, which consisted of a group of about 50 women from the state of Connecticut to advise Senator George McLean of the sentiment in favor of the federal women's suffrage amendment. As an early advocate for the welfare of children in community service and women's rights, the strong Stratford woman seems to have had a lifetime of accomplishments. However, Billy passed away much too young at the age of 30 in May of 1928. Thank you for allowing me to present this important woman.
Thank you, Laura. Much appreciated to both of you. And thank you for, for your time and due diligence on, on doing that. Next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'm sorry. If I may.
We're gonna, I don't, no, I'm gonna keep moving on because I, they highlighted the two distinct agenda. Thanks. So next item on the agenda under Communications of Bills is item 3.1 for letters of resignation. This is for informational purposes only. An email for Sandra Zalek. She is coming off the planning commission as an alternate. Next item is 3.2, the monthly tan report. Ms. Savo.
Hi, this is Dawn Savo, Finance Director. The report was in your, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you just fine. Go ahead.
The report was in the, your pony package with the agenda. And you'll know on the final page that we end the year with a positive cash flow of roughly $6,000, $94,063. And taxes to date are equal to where we were last year, but at the same time. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for the Finance Director on the tan report? Any counselors? Seeing none. Thank you, Dawn. Much appreciated. Thank you, as always.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. The month of March marks Women's History Month. And in recognition of the contributions and achievements of women in our community, I issued a proclamation recognizing Women's History Month in the Town of Stratford during the month of March. And you've heard the two presentations this evening from counselors Dancho and Sheik on two Stratford women of historical importance. And this month, I'm featuring several trailblazing Stratford women on my social media outlets. Thanks to David Wright and the Stratford Historical Society for their work on the details and providing photos of these women of great significance. I would ask that all the town residents join in this important recognition. Our COVID updates for town operations, our town hall continues to be open by appointment only, excepting our tax offices. However, two weeks ago, we all returned to staff in person full-time. And while all the offices are open and fully staffed, we continue to encourage any residents who have business to be transacted online through email or over the phone, to use those methods as often as possible. Operation Homeward Bound was the Stratford Health Department partnering with EMS, and that began on February 26th to bring COVID-19 vaccines to residents determined to be homebound or unable to safely access the vaccine clinics offered by the Stratford Health Department. The program has been designated Operation Homeward Bound by Stratford Health and the EMS team. Stratford EMS is providing EMS personnel, paramedics who have been qualified as vaccinators through the State Department of Public Health, and partnering them with another healthcare professional, such as a registered nurse, to make up the vaccine teams to deliver COVID vaccine services to those individuals determined to be homebound. I'm proud of our health department EMS teams for collaborating to ensure vaccinations and some of the most vulnerable residents. To date, 10 people have been vaccinated, with the next operation being Friday, the 12th, and 20 residents will then receive the vaccine. And Andrea Bosnian, our health director, just informed me that another six will be receiving vaccines tomorrow. We continue to hold vaccine clinics at the Birds Eye Center every Tuesday and Wednesday. And the successful vaccinations clinics have vaccinated 4,847 individuals. These clinics will be open every Tuesday for second doses and Wednesday will be first doses. To get a vaccine, one must register on the VAM system. And if you have difficulty, what we've been doing is the health department and community services and senior services have been speaking to, to people directly and registering them online in the VAM system. It's important to keep in mind as we continue forward that this is part of a regional effort and a statewide effort. So you don't have to just live in Stratford to attend a Strat, a Stratford clinic. The state's released information about how many individuals have been vaccinated in all Connecticut communities. And as of March 5th, 8,419 people are 16.2% of the town. I don't think that number's right. It must be 84,000. Or 16.2% of town's population have been vaccinated in the first dose. Teachers Clinic. So on Saturday, we had the special vaccination clinic for our teachers, eligible staff, eligible support staff, and daycare providers. Many thanks again to our health department EMS and Medical Reserve Corps and our own Councilwoman Caitlin Sheik, who volunteered that day to administer the vaccines. Thank you, Caitlin, very much. We really appreciate it. And over 500 people were vaccinated. As you know, Governor Lamont has announced some changes in COVID rules effective March 19th. Unfortunately, you know, two days after St. Patrick's Day, but I guess he had a benefit to his madness. All seating capacities are eliminated for the following businesses, while face covering, social distances, and other cleaning and disinfecting protocols are required. Restaurants are eight person table capacity to 11:00 PM. They still have to have the six, six feet of separation. Retail's library, personal services, indoor gyms, fitness centers, museum, aquariums, and zoos have all, and houses of worship have all been lifted. We are now vaccinating residents 55 and older, and that happened as of March 1st. And as of March 22nd, the group expands to 45 years of age to 54. April 12th is 35 to 44, and May 3rd expands age groups of 16 to 34. We still remain at the red level at this point. There has been a lot of talk and today on PLR, our, Dave Patron from Riverview Bistro spoke to Governor Lamont and asked about outside dining and the extension after, the extension of the permits, outside dining permits, after the executive orders are over. And the governor has asked or recommended that municipal leaders decide what's best for their community. So I have every intent of signing an executive order as soon as Brian Leclerc finishes writing it, that will allow the extended outdoor dining for Stratford restaurants. The CBGT Micro Enterprise Grant, 47 small businesses have applied. The Community Development Administrators reviewed 21. Eight are pending. Eighteen unfortunately have been denied because they don't fall within the micro enterprise criteria, meaning five full, full-time employees or less, or their, their business or their clientele don't fall into the low moderate criteria. For those that are successful, the payments can be up to $10,000. On Monday, March 1st, we had a COVID memorial vigil, recognizing those who have lost their lives and loved ones who had lost people due, due to the pandemic. I issued a proclamation in remembrance of those who lost their lives. And special thanks to Reverend Simeon Law from the United Methodist Church for joining us and leading us in prayer. State Representative Joe Gresska was president and counselors Caitlin Sheik and Paul Taveras, thank you very much for joining us at the ceremony. The clergy, the clergy association is advocating that they set up other memorial events and vigils throughout town. As they come to my attention, I will reach out and inform you. Digital Dreams Donation has conducted a very successful digital drive on Martin Luther King Day under the direction of Tammy Chergenowski. Thank you, Tammy. And it was a day of service with some folks from the high schools and from Sterling House. And so we collected old devices, computers, and phones, and they're being wiped clean and repurposed and then given to seniors who don't have any kind of technology that are far reaching. Tammy is very excited today to tell us that Planet Troy, who has done the refurbishment, will be giving us a total of 50 devices. So that's really pretty cool. We received a United Way COVID Relief Grant last month, and I was happy to join Mary Dean and Tammy Chergenowski to receive a grant of $4,000 from United Way Coastal Fairfield County. And Pablo Cologne and Kathy Vlejos were town residents and also members at United Way who donated and presented the money. There'll be a drive-through food pantry at Holy Name of Jesus Church on March 9th. And that's in Connecticut with the Stratford Health Department and Connecticut Food Bank and the church. One bag will be available per car. Sikorsky Aircraft lands a $1 billion contract. Our congratulations to Sikorsky. Thank God for Sikorsky, our number one taxpayer. And the contract is for US Air Force helicopter upgrades. The town budget is nearly concluded, and I will be sending it to you as the charter prescribed by Friday, March 12th. We have some upcoming events on September 17. We have some upcoming events on September, September I wish, on the March 17th is St. Patrick's Day. And we will do the flag raising ceremony in the morning at nine o'clock. Everyone is welcome to join us. We will have social distance appropriate cookies wrapped individually as a little memento since we can't do the Irish Soda Bread Contest again this year. Senior Grocery Bags, as of March 4th, the Senior Services is providing residents aged 60 and over who have difficulty accessing food during the pandemic, a fresh bag of groceries twice a month on Thursdays between 10 and 12. If anyone is interested, contact Senior Services and they can sign you up. The Southland Community Center is again offering volunteer income tax assistance, the VITA program or the Vita Program. The Southend has been doing this for 17 years. And anyone who's income is less than $57,000 is eligible to use these services. Appointments can be made by calling Southland Community Center. Shakespeare Market continues on its bi-monthly outdoor food. We had a whole weekend, this past weekend of the outdoor market. No snow problems or anything else, and it went really, really well. My personal thanks to Tom Dillon and to Karen Doyle and Mary Dean for working with Tom to set this up. It's really a great asset to Stratford and it's allowing so many people to take advantage of Shakespeare property in the park. The Contract Planning and Raymark work and public meetings still continue. I know Counselor Shake and I were on the meeting. Was it last Tuesday, last Wednesday? Sometime this past week. But if any counselor is interested in finding out what's going on, if you go to the Health Department's website, there is a Raymark link and you can listen to the recordings, it's really quite informative. So the properties on East Main Street are pretty much completed with the exception of Ashcroft, which they're doing now. And the the Raymark waste has been started to move up and be placed onto the ball field. The Army Engine Site, I'm really excited to tell you that the DEEP's concurrence of the Record of Decision document is circulating for the Commissioner's signature. The stewardship permit is being reviewed for renewal and it has its own timeline, which doesn't affect the Record of Decision document. But I discussed it with the Deputy Commissioner today and she's reviewing it now. And then she'll pass it on to the Commissioner for her signature. And so then away we go, off to cleaning up the mud flats. The Sikorsky Airport 10-year plan, we had a meeting this past week regarding the noise abatement. And it was presented by the master plan consultant. This plan has already been approved by the FAA and it's in the queue to be approved by the city, Bridgeport City Council. 91 Ave Bambas Kirk, the project is moving along and so already received approval by the Planning Commission and the Town Council to abandon the unpaved road of Bambas Kirk and to be joined but to the abutting property in the center line of the road. The administration and the owner of a certain parcel known as 65 Wood have agreed to terms of 0.11 acres. And I'll be bringing this forward to you shortly, asking for your approval. Some staff news, John Rosatski, longtime zoning enforcement officer, will be retiring in May. We will miss John, he has served the town well for 28 years. And this position is now posted internally. Just a reminder to you, the town offices will be closed up for observance of Good Friday on April 2nd. And for those, for all those who celebrate, I'd like to wish you a happy Easter, you and your families a happy Easter. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them or try to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll open it up for questions to the mayor. Mr. Counselor Devaris, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. After the chair, I just have one question, Mayor, good evening. But I just want to say, thank you. Councilwoman Shake was able to vaccinate her mom. And I thought that that had to be one of the most awesomest experiences. It was unscripted and she put it on social media and it was just made my whole day. It had to be wonderful, something that doesn't happen every day, so kudos to you, virtual hug. On a serious note, Mayor, I just wanted to know if you could share any updates on the officer involved shooting from last month? Some of my constituents and myself were just inquiring about if there's been any reports or anything that you could share.
Unfortunately, Counselor, thank you for the question, I cannot share anything at this time. It's under the state attorney's investigation and she has not released us to speak about the matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Devaris, any other questions for the mayor?
It's Greg Kahn.
Yep, Greg, go ahead, you have it.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Hoydick, regarding the Army Engine Plant and the Record of Decision, can you provide a little background on what a Record of Decision is and what scope of work does it encompass?
Record of Decision is agreement between the Army or the Department of Defense and the Army and the Connecticut DEEP regarding the remediation of the water side and the mud flats that had been contaminated by the Army's use when they were building equipment and military devices.
Excellent. Any other questions? Greg, you've already done?
Thank you, Chris, all set.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the mayor, any other councilors? Caitlin, go ahead.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor Hoydick, I feel like I ask the same questions at every meeting and it's about, it's about COVID and about testing. Do we have a list of participating pharmacies that are also here in Stratford that will be providing COVID vaccines?
I don't have that list off, off the top of my head Caitlin, but I'm happy to get it for you.
Okay, thank you, I think that would be helpful. Just because, you know, as many of you, if you haven't encountered it yet, it can be an arduous process trying to schedule your vaccine. And a lot of people aren't aware that they don't only have to go through VAMs, they can go through, you know, CBS or Walgreens or whichever other pharmacy. I've gotten a lot of questions from family and friends that live in the area. So I would also just want to make a comment that on Saturday at the vaccine clinic that the Health Department held, it was extremely rewarding to be able to, you know, help so many of our educators and childcare workers or school bus drivers. They were all so thankful to be able to come right here in Stratford. And, you know, the overall feedback from people was that they were just so grateful for the kindness and the patience that they dealt with regarding so many of the staff and volunteers that were there. And it was really, it's a special thing to be able to participate. But, you know, just for feedback for you in case you hadn't gotten that because it was repetitive over and over, people were just so thankful. So I'm looking forward to helping whenever I'm not working to do it again. And kudos to the Health Department and Nurse Bernie who has like six million copies of herself organizing everywhere and Andrea and Kelly and the whole team. And the EMTs that were there also helping if anyone had any questions or concerns. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for volunteering again Caitlin, that was really very kind of you, very good of you. And these clinics, then we've had many, as you've heard, that over 4,000 people have been vaccinated. The response for those that have received the vaccine has been very, very positive and they're so appreciative, as you said Caitlin. And we started, by the way, I think we had 200 or 250 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson that were dispensed on Saturday. So those are the one-dose vaccines, they're 85% effective. And many of the teachers really were looking forward to getting that one dose vaccine. We also gave out Moderna as well. And the nice thing at the Stratford Health Department, and I'm sure the other clinics are doing the same, is they're scheduling your second vaccine, your booster, right before you leave. So it's not, there's no guessing game, you don't have to go back on VAMs. And it's, it's really a great process, Andrea has done an amazing job. And Mike Downs reminded us today that March 11th, it will be a year that we first started sending out the emails, keeping everybody informed about what was happening with COVID. So it's been a year, oh my gosh, it's been a year. And I think Counselor, on March 4th, many of, last year, many of us were together to celebrate Bill O'Brien's retirement. And that was the last time we were together before we all went into lockdown. So it's funny what, it's funny how a year passes and what, what a day will make, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Yes, Counselor O'Brien, questions for the mayor, go ahead, sir.
And Mayor, how was that for luck of the Irish? But a couple of comments about vaccinations. One first is a compliment to the Baldwin Center, all the way from Ontario, Canada. I spoke to someone I met when he volunteered at Sterling House when he was a student at Pennell. He's a Marine Corps veteran who served three tours in Iraq. And he's with the civilian part of the Defense Department now. But his parents still live on Huntington Road and he praised the Baldwin Center for the help they gave his parents in getting vaccinations. And then a question I have is about the reporting of the numbers. Is this based on a statewide database? Because there's so many of us that have received the vaccine out of town. Or are those numbers based on just our Health Department?
No, no, it's based on the Department of Public Health.
The State Department, yeah.
State Department, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Bill, any other councilors have a question for the mayor? Nope. Okay, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, under Committee Reports, is item 4.3.1 in ordinance, I'll entertain a motion for item 4.3.1.1.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho and I propose that on ordinance 4.3.1, an ordinance creating an educational reserve fund be approved and that the second reading of this ordinance be dispensed with and received by all and be adopted as the second reading foregoing and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Dancho, Mr. Leclerc, I'm getting a lot of background noise from you, just an FYI. Thank you, sir. Motion by Madam Councilwoman Dancho, do I have a second to that?
Second, this is Dave Harden.
I have a second by Counselor Harden, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, District 10. I would like to propose an amendment to the ordinance creating an educational reserve fund.
Go ahead, Ms. Dancho.
The amendment would be, if you're reading from the agenda, starting on line three of section two. And it would be to be delete, delete up to the, from after the word account all the way to the end of that sentence and replace it with this following statement. Deposit into a non-lapsing account such amount of the unexpected funds of the prior fiscal year's budgeted appropriation for education for the town as the Town Council may determine. In making this determination, the Town Council shall consider increases or decreases in ECS revenue or other state funding for educational purposes from that projected in the town budget, contributions made by the town to the maintenance of buildings or the operation of systems used by the Board of Education and/or any other factors relating to the financial well-being of the town as the Town Council deems relevant. And then at the end of section two, I would like to delete the entire last sentence beginning with if prior to the appropriation to the very end.
Okay, motion, motion to amend by Councilwoman Dancho, do I have a second to that?
I'll second the motion to amend that was put forth by Councilwoman Dancho.
Thank you, Counselor Harden, and a second, discussion. Attorney Leclerc, if you may, sir, I know this, this came, this was brought to my attention by yourself as well as Attorney Florican after consulting Finance Director Sabo, could you just give us some clarity on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Brian Leclerc. These proposed amendments are from the Town Attorney's Office in consultation with the town's Finance Director. They provide guidance to the Town Council as well as flexibility to consider and take into account factors that affect the overall financial well-being of the town. And that's why we've drafted them, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Are there any other discussion on the amendment only, on the amendment? No? Okay.
Chris, Greg Kahn?
Go ahead, Greg, go ahead, Greg.
So we, we read this at one council and now, and then ordinance and it's come back. There's a general statement by Mr. Leclerc that it's to improve clarity for Town Council and maybe protect. What, what risks were identified in the last couple of weeks that necessitated this revision?
Sure.
And are there some examples, in addition to that, are there some examples of, well, maybe the risks will serve as the examples, I'm just trying to see the motivator.
Let me, let me highlight, Ms. Sabo, we had discussed this and I know you had, Dawn, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you want to just provide a little clarity to Greg? Yes, you're, one of the reasons you had brought up to us and thought that we should do this.
Sure. Thank you, Chair and Councilman. And the reason why I brought up something was if the town were in a situation where we had a deficit or, so because the education budget is a line item in the overall general fund, if revenues were low and expenses were high for all other accounts and we had a deficit or we had less in a surplus than was the actual surplus in the education line, it would not be in the town's best financial interest to have to then dip into the town's fund balance in order to set aside money for the Board of Ed. Does that make sense? The way I'm explaining it?
Greg?
I'm trying to think of the balance of this. The money, if money was reserved for the Board of Ed, those unspent funds, it will remain reserved for the Board of Ed. It just may be the town doesn't have the capacity to pay it out at a certain point in time.
So yeah, so the Board of Ed is a line item in our budget. And just like the police line, the different police lines or the fire department or the mayor's office, it's just a line item overall budget. We have a revenue budget and a expense budget. So say revenues come in very low and the expenses are the same, then at the end of the year, we're going to have a deficit and that deficit comes out of the town's existing fund balance, whatever reserve we have to cover the cost of those expenses. So if we said, you know, if the town then is saying, you know, this just gives the council the ability to, you know, take other things into account when making that decision, it's not automatic that if that particular line item has a balance that it would have to come out of the fund balance necessarily. Does that, does that help clarify?
Yeah, and Greg, I'll just add in, it just essentially keeps, gives the town more flexibility in its decision. Frankly, I think this improves the overall language of it on the town's behalf.
And here's an open question. If, say the Board of Ed has its own operating budget and the Town Council reviews that operating budget and we then put a number into the town budget. If typically when the Board of Ed's actual expenses were lower than its operating budget and it therefore had a surplus, it would spend that surplus for, let's say, computers or furniture. They'd essentially try to deplete the surplus and spend down their entire budget. Is there any mechanism that reduces the BOE's flexibility to spend all of their money even if it exceed, even if their actual operating budget came in under?
Hey, Brian Leclerc, or you're shaking? Brian Leclerc, or Mr. Sheik here?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, it's Brian Leclerc. Uh, under the budget process in Connecticut, for Connecticut municipalities, the Board of Education is but one line item in your municipal budget. Much like, much like you have line items for the police, fire, public works, various departments. So once you give the Board of Education and fund that line item, they can allocate the money uh, within their department as they see fit. The Board of Ed can increase line items on their own budget. There's one line of funding coming in from the town, but you cannot control uh, what the Board of Ed does, you know, what it's putting for salaries, what it's putting for books, pencils, desks, et cetera. You fund it with one line item uh, each year. So, uh, Noah is to answer your question.
Any answer?
All set.
Thank you. Any other, any discussion on the amendment? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Uh, Ms. Paquette, I believe it should be a roll call vote on, on the ordinance, it should be as well as the amendment?
No, just the final passage of the ordinance.
Thank you. So, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Your votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, uh, motion, amended, motion passes 10-0. Um, back to the original motion. Uh, any further discussion on the uh, original motion as amended? Nope, hearing none. Uh, we'll call for, Ms. Paquette, we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
This is Margot Paquette, the council clerk. This is a roll call vote for agenda item 4 dot 3 dot 1 dot 1. Ms. Sheik?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Mr. Harden, yeah.
Mr. Khan?
Yeah.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Danchow?
Yes.
Chairman Pia?
Chair votes aye.
That is unanimous 10-0 vote.
Thank you all. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda will be item 4.3.2 under the Public Works Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Counselor Poisson.
I can make a motion to approve item 4.3.2. Uh, the Route 1 10 improvements to wider gate at Sperzky entrance in the amount of $6,093 pending the availability of sufficient funding.
Okay, motion to approve item 4.3.2A, uh, stated by Counselor Poisson. Do I have a second?
Laura Danchow, second.
Second by Ms. Danchow. Uh, any discussion on this? Uh, items were sent out in the pony with all the information. No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Your votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Uh, Mr. Poisson, would you like to make the next one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2B, the Circle Drive Bridge Project Alternative Number One uh, in the estimated amount of $700,000.
Thank you, Counselor Poisson. Do I have a second to that motion?
Bill O'Brien, second.
Second by Counselor O'Brien. Uh, discussion on that.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien.
I just wanted to mention that I, yeah, I sometimes worry about going with the least expensive alternative, but in this case, I did some research. First of all, this bridge serves only 12 homes, so it doesn't get a great deal of uh, traffic. The uh, second and third more expensive options would have allowed more water to flow through during major storms. And I found no evidence of flooding for the residents in that area. The pond kind of serves as a catchall for the heavy rains. However, downstream, I spoke to two residents, one who built a 17-foot wall to keep the water from coming into his yard and another one farther down that has much erosion in the brook in their yard from the water. So allowing more water to come through during storms would cause problems downstream. So I just want to mention that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I know you guys vetted this to Public Works as well as Town Engineer John Casey weighed in on it. So, um, any other discussion on it? No? Okay, we'll uh, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.3 under the building needs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion to approve item 4.3.3A, uh, to Stratford High School Turner Change Order Request Number 307 in the amount of $38,528 for the King Street Crossing Beacons.
Okay, motion by Mr. Counselor Poisson. Do I have a second?
Caitlin Sheik, I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sheik, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0.
So Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.3B. Uh, it's a CSW Space 4 Foltow Vitaeck, um, which is solar panels, uh, project manual for the Stratford High School renovation project.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Laura Danchow, second.
Counselor Madancho, uh, any discussion on item B? Okay, uh, hearing, oh Paul, sorry.
You want to explain what that is? Is that for the um, the construction of the panels on there, on the, on the, on the Stratford High School?
Counselor Poisson. Yep.
Yeah, this is the uh, project manual. It just has to be approved uh, through the state. This is very similar to what we did on the uh, other school roofs in town, except this is just coming from a separate pile of money. This is coming from the Stratford High School bond and not bonded through the others, the other schools for a separate pile of money. This just has to meet the state deadline. It's the exact same process we went through with the other schools.
Any questions?
For the attorney is, um, is this something that I need to abstain from?
I think it's Brian Leclerc, sorry. I think based upon past discussions we've had regarding your involvement with photovoltaic projects, that might be appropriate.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Um, any other discussion on that? Okay, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, one abstention by Counselor Tavarez for the record. Motion passes 9-0-1. Um, next item on the agenda is Town Attorney's Report. Attorney Housen.
I have no report this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is 6.2.1, a resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Laura Danchow. I motioned to accept resolution, uh, item 6.2.1 regarding Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection Cleanback Program for the operation and maintenance of the Stratford Pump Out Boat.
Excellent. Um, do I have a second?
Caitlin Sheik, I'll second.
Uh, Perillo, I could hear both, but Mr. Counselor Perillo on the second, um, discussion on this. Um, this is the annual grant for the pump out boat that we receive every year from DEEP. Helps everybody. So any, any of this discussion? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Uh, next item 6.2.2. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr.
As the oldest member of this uh, council, I move the resolution regarding Older Americans Title III SWC AA Mini Grant.
Thanks, Bill. I'll, I'll take a second.
Second, Dave Harden.
Seconded by Counselor Harden. Do I have any discussion on this item? No, another grand opportunity. Thank you to all who work for it. Uh, we'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed 10-0. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 6.2.3.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien.
I move the resolution naming the press box at Frank DeLuca Hall of Fame Field for Harold Hal Baird.
Motion by Counselor O'Brien. Do I have a second to that motion?
Laura Danchow, I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Danchow, uh, under discussion, for, for the discussion purposes, um, I have invited uh, Mr. Mr. [inaudible] uh, who, uh, I'm not gonna, I'll allow him to introduce himself. Um, Mr. Baird, can you say a few words for us?
Just a few. Cause I got to, to UConn women are up by 18 at halftime.
The floor is yours.
Alrighty, thank you, Chris. Um, on behalf of the uh, entire Stratford Braket organization, I'm very pleased to be here to speak about my friend Hal Baird and longtime colleague. Um, we also want to thank the mayor and the entire town council for approving this recommendation to name the press box at DeLuca Field and in memory and in honor of Hal, who uh, is well-known in, you know, Stratford and Fairfield County, affectionately known as The Voice. Um, you know, he's been around, he's, he's older than, he was older than dirt, I think, but uh, you know, he's a great guy. And uh, he was involved in radio for over 20 years at WNAB, ICC, other stations. Uh, he was a hockey announcer for professional teams in New Haven. He's been uh, the Braket announcer for, ever since I've been there. When I took over in 88, that was my first call to get him as the uh, press box announcer. He has a goo, a golden voice. But I told him he has a radio face, so don't even worry about television. But uh, you know, Hal, in his career, he uh, well, first of all, there's many things that people don't know about him. He's a very quiet person, very professional in everything he did. Um, on Friday mornings, on his days off when he's working, uh, he would read to the blind. I mean, how many people have read to the blind? Most of the students I had, you know, in class were sleeping, so I guess you could call, they were blind, but uh, you know. Don't worry, Mayor, I won't say anything more. But uh, you know, Hal was just fantastic. And in his 33 years announcing games at DeLuca, he announced 1,265 Stratford Braket games. That doesn't include all the high school, the college games, the youth tournaments and everything else. Um, you know, he, he was just, he was a great friend. I've known him for since 1956. And I'm not going to tell you how old we are, but we were both 11 at the time, so you can figure it out. You know, the funniest thing about Hal is he always liked, he had the power when he had the mic in his hand. And it was 96 and I have the misfortune to have my anniversary and my birthday both occurring during the Braket seasons in the summertime. And he would always announce, you know, please uh, you know, recognize Mr. and Mrs. Baird. You know, we try to stay out of the limelight there. And uh, it's a 25th wedding anniversary today. And the big spender is, he took his wife to Danny's drive-in. And uh, you know, I, people didn't clap, they booed me. I was hoping he'd be around for my 50th this year, but uh, we'll just have to do it without Hal. I think I'm gonna take him down to uh, the little pub in Lordship, maybe have supper that night. But uh, I really appreciate this and how you doing Kenny? I see you there smiling. But uh, you know, it's just, it's a great thing. You know, it's too bad that we recognize people when they're gone. You know, it'd be nice if we could just say something nice about people or name them, you know, something, name something and honor them while they're still here and they can appreciate it. But hey, that's the way it is in life. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And uh, I won't bore you anymore because the game's starting again.
Bob, thank you, as always.
Always a pleasure, Chris. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and thank you to the entire town council and the mayor's office for making this happen. Um, I'm gonna end it, end the discussion with that and great words and uh, great memory of Hal and everything he did for the town. We'll call this for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Your votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Thank you, everybody. Um, next item on the agenda is item 7.1.1. I'll entertain a motion. Yes. Counselor Poisson, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to uh, make a motion to approve item 7.1.1A, be it resolved that Perez Palmer of Curtis Place BN is hereby reappointed an alternate member of the Board of Assessment Appeals to a term that expires March 14th, 2024.
Motion by Counselor Poisson. Do I have a second to the motion?
Seconded by Dave Harden.
Seconded by Counselor Harden. I have Dave, thank you. Uh, any discussion? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Uh, next item 7.1.1B. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Connor from the 8th District. I'd like to uh, resolve that Teresa Shi of Chapel Street be and is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Board of Assessment Appeals to a term that expires March 14th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
I have Mr. O'Brien on the second. Uh, any discussion? No, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Your votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Uh, last item is, Counselor Poisson, do I have a second to that?
Laura Danchow, I'll second.
Ms. Danchow, thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you all. Everyone have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Night.